Start.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the fourth and the fourth meeting of the Planning Board for Fiscal Year 2021. In accordance with the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, this meeting of the Milton Planning Board is to be held remotely utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software. The login and call-in information is listed on the board agenda, and the meeting is being televised live by Milton Access TV. So I would like to introduce themselves, please, Cheryl.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
And Denny?
Denny Swenson, Secretary.
And Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
And Rich, we're just introducing ourselves, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Want to introduce yourself?
Yes, Rich Beeler, I think, member.
And I am April Anderson, Chair of the Board. So we'll call this meeting to order under Administrative Items. The next meeting dates are October 8th and October 22nd.
Can I actually, can we change the 22nd to any night but the 22nd? I have Friends of Blue Hills annual meeting that night, and I hope others don't mind. Could we do Wednesday or Tuesday that night, or?
Is there anything?
So it was supposed to be October 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I actually have a full meeting that night anyway, so too, so yeah. The 21st would be fine. The Tuesday would be even better.
I could do any of the days but Tuesday.
So has one?
I can do Wednesday.
Cheryl, do you?
Wednesday's fine.
Okay.
Does the Select Board meet on Wednesdays that week? I know, I think that, I mean, at the end of the day, it is what it is. The School Committee actually meets on the same night as well on Wednesdays, so I don't know.
Would Monday be better, Tim, or even the following week, maybe?
I'm gonna, I'm bringing up the town, the public meeting calendar. I don't think anyone's actually scheduled that far out, but I think we can kind of see generally when people tend to meet. Yeah, so the Select Board and the School Committee meet on the Wednesday that the Planning Board usually meets the following day. So it looks like they had a meeting yesterday. I think it's safe to assume that they meet on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month.
The 29th look for everybody, if we bump it a week instead?
That works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, works fine for me.
And let's do that, just for simplicity for Milton Access TV and
Yeah.
the public who may wish to tune into multiple things. All right, so then our meeting dates will be October 28th, uh, October 8th, excuse me, 29th. Then I just want to make a note for the board, the October 8th, it does not look like we will have any new filings earmarked that meeting for discussion of zoning. So we will start with Denny Swenson's long-awaited tree proposal. And what I'm hoping that we can do is kick the old business agenda item and perhaps the housing production plan discussion to the next meeting where we can have a full two hours of zoning discussion uninterrupted, but we can see how things go. But we have, and Tim can bring us up to speed on a few other things, but we have the article that Denny's working on, the article that Kathleen's working on, if she's prepared to discuss it.
Yeah.
We have a request relating to Carberry, which could be a zoning request to discuss most of the discussion of the housing production plan as related to zoning. And we can also review that longer list that we've been kind of carrying forward for the last few years and have a talk about what we choose to move forward and what we are going to table for the moment. So planned for October 8th. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval, July 23rd and September 10th, and it looks like they have both been revised. So I'm assuming that everybody's had a chance to review. Does anybody have any questions from the board on those meeting minutes?
I just had one. I propose that we approve Cheryl's amendments and Kathleen's amendments, but there was one sentence in Kathleen's that I just watched the whole discussion again about the condo bylaw, and she added a sentence that said Ms. O'Donnell had considered that idea, but it is not, but is not convinced that it is the best approach. And that sentence was actually never stated in the meeting, so we could state it in the next, next time we talk about the condo bylaw, but I think we shouldn't include it in the minutes because it hadn't been stated.
Well, it doesn't make any sense anyway, so just take it out.
Okay, that's easy. So
Is that, is that the summer 10th or July 23rd?
I'm sorry, that's July 23rd. So I move to approve both July 23rd, 2020, 20,020, no, it's 2020, and September 10th, 2020.
As amended?
As amended, yeah.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Great. Okay, we'll move on to Tim with the staff update. Tim, take it away.
Hi, everybody. So I never know what to say in these things because I spend, I spend my days doing things that sometimes are really, really big and momentous things, and other times it's chasing after various special permit languages. So sometimes it's pretty boring stuff. One thing that I wanted to kind of tee up for our conversation in two weeks about zoning is there's obviously articles that the Planning Board members have been working on. We did get a request to consider a change to the great estates zoning that enabled the Walcott Woods project down on Cat Nav. And the issue there is it's an age-restricted 55-plus project. And what I think they're encountering at Walcott Woods and also in other similar, similar projects in the region, Belmont is actually dealing with one very similar, is the sort of situation where, if you can imagine, a, you know, an age-qualified adult with an adult child home from school, for instance, or an age-qualified, you know, family with a disabled adult child that needs to live, you know, in the townhouse, a age-qualified, you know, woman who is married to a younger, non-age-qualified man, all of these different kind of family arrangements that I think everyone kind of acknowledges as, you know, garden variety, this is stuff, this is life. It doesn't, isn't strictly enabled by that zoning. And so there are questions as to, you know, can someone with an adult child or someone with a younger partner actually qualified to live in these places? So, you know, without making any judgments as to whether or not we should change the zoning, I do think it's a reasonable discussion to have. And so what I've asked Nick Corcoran, who's the attorney for the proponent, to draft up some language for the Planning Board to take a look at in advance of our zoning discussion in two weeks and kind of tack that on to that agenda item and kind of discuss, you know, if the Planning Board is okay with it, you know, what a timetable would be. But I do think it's worth considering. And so I've asked Nick to draw that language up. So, you know, get your thoughts together on that, and I'll get you that language as soon as, as soon as we get it. One, one thing kind of relevant to our 227 Pleasant Street conversation that we'll be having later, it's not ready, they haven't been able to officially approve it, but I do have draft language from the Board of Health. I've asked the Board of Health, they're required to chime in on subdivisions, usually for septic matters, but not exclusively. So one of the comments that they had, you know, on the 227 is similar to the discussion we had last week about sidewalks. And I think that got them thinking about, you know, we should just have a policy statement as a board that, you know, this is just a standing recommendation. So you'll be getting language at some point soon from the Board of Health as a kind of standing policy that they want to see two sidewalks in all subdivisions. And I think that would extend to any other sort of special permit project. So again, that's, I didn't feel comfortable sharing the draft language because it has actually been approved, but it is something that our Director of Public Health has drawn up for consideration for her board. Another thing, I may have talked about it last time, and I think I've talked about it with members on an individual basis, but the Plan Department is endeavoring to update the town's open space and recreation plan. The last time that we had an updated open space recreation plan was 2006, so that's quite some time ago. There's a state kind of mandated, not mandated, but a state kind of regulated process for these open space plans that if you do it the way that the Commonwealth says, it opens you up to all sorts of opportunities for recreational, open space, conservation, construction, acquisition, funding, grant, grant funding from the Commonwealth. So it's a, it's money that we've been leaving on the table that I don't think we should be leaving on the table anymore. I had a meeting this afternoon with, with the Parks Manager and then the Chairs of the Park Commission and the Conservation Commission. They're on board. I don't have a problem saying that publicly. So I'm going to be working with the Town Administrator and the Select Board on, you know, what the next steps are. I'm still kind of getting educated on the Commonwealth's guidance on this, but I'll have a little bit more to report as to whether or not we need a budget for it, whether or not we need representation from the Planning Board. I suspect that we do and we should, so again, put some thought into that. But I'll have some updates on that. And, you know, my goal is to have a robust process, not just in Town Hall, but out in the communities to figure out, you know, what our open space needs are. We can talk a little bit more in detail. I might want to put in the agenda item on a future agenda to talk through this, but it really, you know, there's a lot of goals that the town has for its property, and you really can't talk about other things until you have your, your open space and recreational kind of needs set. So I think it'll have cascading effects for some really good things for, for the town. One final thing, I was on an interesting call this afternoon. MAPC had kind of convened a bunch of folks, you know, from the region about Blue Bikes expansion. Blue Bikes is the public bike share system currently in City of Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Brookline, Everett, recently expanded to, or is in the process of expanding to Quincy, Chelsea, and I forget, there's another community out there, Arlington, I believe. Bike share is just gangbusters right now. People are using bike share, it's setting records, you know, in this time. I think people are realizing that alternative modes of mobility are really the way to go. And so it was just an interesting call about kind of what the mechanics of expansion would be. You know, one, the Bicycle Advisory Committee is always interested in bringing bike share to Milton, and so learning a little bit more about, it's actually Lyft, the ride-share company owns the system, apparently. And, you know, one of their requirements for expansion is you've got to be within three-quarters of a mile of an existing station, which actually, a lot of our, quite frankly, areas that would be ripe for a bike share are within three-quarters of a mile of Mattapan Square, and there's a station right on Central Ave across the bridge. There's other requirements, but I think it's the thing that I'm looking to explore and working with the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I know we talked at some point in the recent past about a bicycle master plan. I'm trying to sort out that. I know that we'd been in conversations with MAPC about that, but I'd like to sort of get that going as well. So I think the Master Plan Presentation Committee was involved with that in some way, so I'd want to have that conversation with them, but that's another kind of parallel track that we're on. I'm gonna stop because now that I've gotten rolling, I can, I can just go through my day, but you don't want to hear all of that stuff. But that was the interesting stuff. So that's that.
Thank you. I'm very enthusiastic about the open space plan. I think that would be terrific. Okay, so we, it is past 7:05, and we have a definitive subdivision application for 227 Pleasant Street that was continued from September 10th. Denny?
Did you want to do citizen speak?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, yes, thank you. I would like to, before we open up the public hearing, I would like to ask the members of the public who wish to speak on items that are not on our agenda to please raise your hand, and this is your opportunity. And we'll just give it a moment. Don't see anyone raising any hands. I don't see anyone waving at any screens. Oh, Ms. Klasby, yes. Hold on just one moment. I have unmuted you, Ms. Klasby. You, I think, have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
And I assume you would like to speak about 227 Pleasant Street, is that correct?
Yes.
Why don't we wait until we open the public hearing so that your comment is not public record? Is that okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Anybody else want to speak for citizen speak? And if not, then we will open the public hearing for the definitive subdivision for 227 Pleasant Street. And what I would ask is that our town planner just bring us up to speed on what he knows of what has transpired since our last meeting on September 10th. Tim, do you have anything to report to us?
What has transpired? It's very ominous. There's been, there's been transparations. So there were a number of requests for additional information at, at last week's meeting, or two weeks ago's meeting, that I believe the proponent has, has responded to. There are, I'm going to bring up the folder with all of the additional materials, but I know that there was a request for a reconsideration of the grading, especially at the front of the site. There's been a revised grading plan that was submitted. There were some proposed updates to the Declaration of Trust and the easement plan. Those were also submitted. An updated construction management plan that addressed the blasting question. I'll let Marion McHettrick or the proponent speak to that in a little more detail. There was another request outside of the context of the meeting that we got from, from one of the members for some additional information about the specifications of the proposed fence and, excuse me, a profile diagram of the retaining wall. All those documents have been provided, and they're in the folder of materials. Also included are some explanatory memos from Ms. McHettrick that hopefully everyone had a chance to look at. So with that, I would ask Marion to kind of walk through some of those materials, and if there's anything that you would like me to put up on the screen to share, I will do that. So just let me know.
Okay, Marion, you have to unmute, or do I have to unmute you? Unmute. Okay, there you go, Marion. Sorry about that.
All right, all set. You can hear me? Thank you. Yes, as Tim said, we did receive several requests at both of the last meeting and then after the meeting for updated information. I'm going to leave the plans for the last because I think you might want to have those up on the screen. First of all, I updated the construction management plan, and after conferring with the project developer, we decided we would say that we will not use blasting in this project. We discussed that at the last meeting. So we added language that there will be no blasting. If it should happen that something comes up that requires blasting, the developer then would have to come back to the Planning Board. I also did some additional edits to the Declaration of Trust. There are two issues here. One that came up in the meeting, which, and then after the meeting, was about maintaining the fence around the perimeter of the development and maintaining the retaining walls. So I've added a section in the Declaration of Trust under the responsibilities of the Homeowners Association, that the association will be responsible for maintaining both the fence and the retaining wall. In addition, the peer review engineer who has completed the peer review process for the stormwater management system asked that the homeowners association be specifically required, it's already required to maintain the stormwater management system, but the specific requirements which I added as, as specific language are that they must hire a company to maintain the stormwater system, send a copy of the current contract for stormwater management to the DPW and Planning Board, maintain reports of all maintenance, regular and unscheduled, and send those reports to the DPW and Planning Board. So these are all requirements that were recommended by the peer review engineer, and I put them in the Declaration of Trust to address that request. On the grant of easement, this is just, this is an easement that has to be recorded. It's a grant to the Town of Milton because certain, first of all, the Town of Milton needs emergency access on this private way. It has to have the right to get on the private way, including access to the conservation land owned by the town, which is in back of this development. And also, the town always requests with these developments that they be given the right to come in and maintain the water line and the fire hydrants. Once those are installed, the town maintains them, unlike the sewer line. So there was just some editing that I'd sent this, after discussing this with the board last time, I sent it back to Kathleen O'Donnell. She provided some edits. So the document you see now is the document as it was edited by Kathleen O'Donnell. So going back to the plans, we sent back more than a week ago, an updated site plan by James Burke or grading plan, and this was showing some lowering of heights of retaining walls and adjustment of grades in order to do that. And it also shows the location of the perimeter fencing, but we then received a request to provide a second drawing, which we have provided to you yesterday. This is all by James Burke, the engineer, and that depicts the construction method and material for the retaining wall, the wall elevations and the fence inside and outside of lots four and five. So the view from inside and outside with the elevations, a description of the fence type and material, and a note showing the change in grade pre and post-construction at a midpoint on the retaining wall edge of lot four and lot five. So, Tim, do you, are you able to put that, if you do put that drawing on up, you have to enlarge it. So if, can you enlarge it?
I can absolutely enlarge it. So just give me a minute, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay. So I'll talk about that first, and then we can go back to the actual site plan, the grading plan.
So do you want to look at the revised grading plan first or the wall profile first?
Well, you have it up, so let's talk about the wall profile. And Jim Burke may want to add some information. But so this top drawing, well, this is the, this is the wall profile. This shows the grades. And as you can see, we're looking at the retaining wall for lots four and lot five. That's, that's where we made some changes. And it's easier for me if you can move down to the views from inside and outside of lots four and five. This shows the proposed finish grade, the property line, the proposed retaining wall. And then go down to the next drawing, Tim. And this shows what the fence will look like from the outside. So the first drawing that you just looked at before, this one, shows the view of the retaining wall from inside lot four and inside lot five. And then this shows the view of the, you can't really see the retaining wall because it's a grade, but the fence, which is placed on top of the retaining wall. So this is a six-foot fence. I've provided a brochure to describe the type of fence. It's from a fence manufacturer. It's a six-foot privacy fence, and that would be what the perimeter fence is going to be. The developer would like to use what's called V300 tongue-and-groove solid privacy fence panels. These are shown in the brochure that I provided to you in a picture, and he thinks he would, he would make the fence a hunter green color. As I've already said, the fence would be maintained by the property owners association, the homeowners association. So this is it. If you go to page three, a little bit higher, okay, stop. That V300 is the tongue-and-groove privacy fence design, and it would be six feet high. And that same design would be used in the fencing surrounding the project. So that's a brief description of these. I don't know if you want to have questions on that, or if we would go, if you want to go to the grading plan, I thought I'd ask Jim Burke to talk about that.
I'm sure, I, you know, this is Jim Burke. Everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
So I guess, as I was listening to Cheryl about the grading, I thought, you know, just getting the heights of the retaining walls down was kind of an important aspect of it. So instead of burying all the grades into the retaining wall and having the vertical steps being all in that, in the retaining wall itself, I kind of just put a three-to-one slope off the walls themselves and treated it that way and took the walls down to like about two feet that run front to back. And then the rear retaining wall, I don't think that gets over four feet. So I mean, it's still very similar grading to what we had before. It's just kind of, it's a factor of how the roads cut into the slope and the architectural style of what we're proposing, you know, no garage unders and that kind of thing. But be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I do want to add one thing, though, which is that we're very concerned about altering the drainage plan by changing, we had to be careful in looking at the design and alterations we could make to the slope, taking into consideration all the concerns that Cheryl expressed, that we did not alter the drainage system, which has been very carefully designed. This is a sloping site. It's a, it's a big concern, I think, for neighbors that we not, we're required not to increase the stormwater drainage, but it's also something that people were concerned about. They're all familiar with the grade of the slope. So, so we did make these changes, but these are what we felt we could do and not change the drainage system. It's taken us about four months working with a peer review engineer. They've done, two engineers have done a lot of work to come up with a very tight, good drainage system, and we don't want to lose that in some kind of redesign process. So that was a consideration in terms of what we thought we could do and couldn't do. We didn't really talk about that at the last meeting, but it, but it certainly actually is something several people have talked to me about from the neighborhood. So in any case, go ahead, if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. I want to go to the public, but before we move on from this, I know there are a handful of grading questions, or at least some grading questions that Cheryl you may have. So before we move on, we should probably just tackle that now. Do you want to take the floor, Cheryl?
April, I, thank you. There are a few things I would like to discuss. So if you would rather get to the public first, you know, and not have the wait, or I'm happy to go either way, but I have a few things.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we go to the public here, there, because I know Ms. Klasby at least is waiting, and probably some others. We do have a letter, let me see if I can pull it up, from, well, let's go through the, see who's here. And if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Ms. Klasby, if you're prepared, I'm happy to call on you first since you've been waiting. Okay, you are unmuted on my side, I believe. Okay, you are unmuted on my side, I believe.
Am I unmuted?
Yes. If you could just say your name and address, please, and then the floor is yours.
Oh, okay. I'm Ann Klasby, 235 Pleasant Street, right next door to 227. Actually, what I wanted to bring up wasn't, doesn't really have anything to do with the grading. So if you wanted to finish talking about the grading.
Nope, talk about anything you'd like.
Okay. I did write a note to all of you folks, an email the other night. And after thinking all this over, my, my major concern, as it was last week, is about the noise. I am really, my house is located about 100 feet from the new proposed road and about 30 feet from lot one. And as such, I am really close to all this construction. And I know from a year or so ago when they built the new houses further down by Bents, I don't think they blasted there either. But the equipment that they had to use was loud enough that I could hear it here and I'm a half a mile, a little more than a half a mile away from Bents. And now I'm not going to be 3,000 feet away, I'm going to be 100 feet away from the noise. So that's my major concern. And concern for my family as well and concern for the rest of the neighborhood because I know how loud that this can be. I don't know how loud it will be, but I know how loud it can be. And I also know that excessive, being exposed to excessive amounts of noise for a long period of time, which this was going to be, is very detrimental to people's health. I'm a biology major. I have degrees in biology and I worked in the medical field and I understand that sort of thing. And it's not something that I'm eager to anticipate here. And there's a, I mentioned in the letter, there's a reason why people in Milton are complaining about airplane noise very understandably because it comes over our house here too. And, but those airplanes are 7,000 feet up and I'm going to be 100 feet away. So just to say a comparison thing, I included in the note a chart that included the different kinds of equipment that's used in a construction site. And almost every piece of equipment has a decibel level of at least 80. And the problem with that is there'll be more than one piece of equipment going at one time. So you don't add the decibel numbers up exactly like, like you would an addition thing, but it does come out to a large amount of noise, no matter how you slice it. It's just, that's what it is. So what I was wondering in my note was, I was wondering if there is such a thing as a decibel noise limit for construction in the town. I know, I notice in Boston, in New York, they do have such things. But I don't know if there is such a thing in this town. And if so, is someone going to monitor that? Maybe someone from the health department. And the other thing is that I know when going through the rock, that's going to be the bad part for me. That's going to be the peak noise, I call it. So if those days when that kind of work has to be done, whether it's building the road or setting the other structures or the foundation, whatever needs to be done, if that kind of work could be sort of bunched together days-wise, so I have a chance to evacuate, is what I call it, because I have to evacuate my home if it's loud enough. I can't sit here and deal with that. So the other thing is if the work that has to be done on that, if it can, if it can sort of be limited to maybe six hours a day or something, only because it's, if it's that, you know, if it's excessive noise, there'll be other things that can be done on the property anyway. And so I know it'd be nice to get it all done as fast as possible, but for the big noise, if that can be limited. I saw somewhere that there's things that can be done, like push the pile of mountain of dirt up or something between the new road and my house or maybe put something like, I don't know what they call it exactly, but it's like fencing that they put along the highway with dampen some of the noise. If that's possible, I don't know what's possible because I'm not a building person. But if something like that could be done to help, that would be wonderful. And that's basically what I'm concerned about, the noise more than the vibration. I know when you're moving rock, you're going to vibrate the ground a little bit too. But I'm less concerned with that than I am with the noise. So whatever noise mitigation procedures can be put in place, that's what I'm asking have happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there other members of the public who would like to speak on this application? If so, either wave at your screen or raise your hand in the Zoom format. Don't see anyone. So I will just take a moment to mention, we did receive another comment letter. Sorry, pardon me for one moment. I'm just going to pull it up. By another neighbor named Judy Lavasor, who has similar concerns to Ms. Klasby relative to noise and vibration at her property and in the neighborhood. So we have that letter as part of the public record, but I wanted to make sure it was available for the public consumption as well. Oh, I am waiting here and I don't see anyone else raising their hand as members of the public who would like to speak. So I think we will now turn it over to the members of the board. And now Cheryl, would you like to start us off?
Sure, since I requested some of that additional information. Tim, could we go to the grading plan first and then we'll go to the additional sections that were provided yesterday?
Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
Just let me know where you want me to zoom into.
Okay. I'm going to use the annotate feature. Hopefully it'll be fairly live. So I appreciate the revision, particularly with the, what you did with regrading to the impact of these, which are now fairly low walls, fairly consistent with the walls that are already existing, the stone walls that are out of the street here. What still concerns me, particularly is the, is the wall along here and potentially the wall along here. And the reason is a tree line. There's a pretty strong tree line along the property lines. And I wanted to understand, because the, the drawing that we have is not actually a record of the existing trees, some of which are likely on your property and some of which are likely on the adjoining property. So, Tim, if you could show now the photos that I sent you. Let me get rid of the.
The red lines?
I'm trying to get rid of the red lines. Did we get rid of them? Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the. Okay, so the image. That's. Okay, so that's the one along Pleasant Street, where I said that the walls would be similar to the ones out of the street. So I estimate those to be 24, 30, 36 inch high with the, with the grade, you know, at the sidewalk level and then rises up behind. I mean, there's a lot of trees along this edge, which when you remove four feet of soil, you know, would be, certainly would be damaged and lost. So is it your intent that even every tree on this property around the perimeter as well as the interior would be removed in order to achieve the grading plan that you've proposed? And part of why I ask that is we go back to the plan that you provided us for our last meeting, which was the cut fill analysis where it was all pink or red showing three, four, five feet of cut everywhere. So, Tim, is that possible for you to bring that plan set up?
Just give me a second.
So if you could zoom in, well, the, all of that pink or red is where soil is being removed. So if you could zoom in a little bit, there's numbers, Tim. So if you just went down to the, let's say scroll down there. So now we can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight feet of soil being removed. And so if there are, maybe those trees along, can everyone see where I'm circling? That photograph was, the trees were there and about that location. So these trees may or may not be impacted by the cut. But there's also, sorry to jump around, Tim, but if you could go back now to the photographs. So, sorry, clear that again. All right, so this is the, the driveway is the property on the neighboring, the neighbor's property. This is the property line with Ms. Klasby. And so we can see here that she has trees on her property, you know, with, I'm thinking that the fence is probably the property line. And if we're cutting down, here, this is the drip line. So I'm assuming that the root ball for some of these trees probably, you know, going into the neighboring property. So if we're going to cut this earth out all the way back, we're going to impact trees that are near the property line on her property as well as on the property on the other side, which was the other photo, Tim? Can you, can you go to that one other photo that we haven't looked at yet, Tim?
I thought this was the one we hadn't looked at yet, but.
This one, if we could zoom in on this one also, just.
The one that's up right now that I'm messing over?
Yes, can we just see that a little bit bigger, please?
Where do you want me to go in the picture?
That's fine, right, well. Okay, so my understanding is, that's good, right there's fine. The property line is pretty much along where the driveway is. Is that correct, Marion and Jim?
Yes.
All right, so are, are these trees, all of these trees here on your property or some of them on this neighbor's property?
Well, I know there's a row of large evergreen pine trees that belong to the neighbor that are right on the edge. But it's very hard for me to tell in this picture. I think they go all the way back. And that's one reason the retaining wall was moved in, it was originally on the lot line or near it, was in order to protect the roots of these trees. So that's, that's remaining at existing grade outside the retaining wall on the side. But maybe the developer or the engineer, maybe Kyle Harnish, I know he's talked to this neighbor, so he may have a better description of what trees are there.
I mean, I can speak on it. At the initial meeting I had with the neighbors, this particular gentleman, Robert Foster, actually expressed that he didn't want any of these trees to be there any longer. And actually, that was that, but that is what he asked.
So can you go, Tim, now to the, the drawing that we received yesterday with the sections? We didn't look at the section portions of those. We looked at the elevation portions. So that would be over towards the left. So if you zoom in on one of those, let's just do section AA, which is on lot five, right? So I think what we asked was, this is, the property line is probably somewhere here. Is that right, Jim?
It's not to scale, you know. So you're looking at a, you know, a representation of a natural stone wall, a gravity wall, 18 inches on the top, probably 30 inches at the bottom. And, you know, the reason we pulled it in 10 feet is, is really to provide, you know, the natural buffer. If we get rid of the wall, Cheryl, it's just going to be, end up being a two-to-one slope with a similar cut. I, you know.
I just want to understand because if, you know, again, let's say, let's say again, let's say we'll move the property line this few steps, if it's 10 feet, this isn't to scale. Let's say it's here, property line's here. And so let's say there's a tree here, right? And you're, you're removing all of the soil going this way, right? So you're taking all that soil out. So if there is a tree that's old and has a root structure doing this, there's the potential that you're cut to build this wall, you're going to have to remove all the soil this way too, probably pretty close to that property line in order to build the wall. So there's really no opportunity to preserve any tree and actually get that wall constructed. Right?
No, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to build the wall. There are ways to protect the trees. If, if the tree is actually, you know, a significant tree worth saving, it's certainly within our realm to, to save the tree and maybe well it out, build the wall out further. You know, it kind of, it depends that, you know, that we can, there's tons of options, tons of options available. Is that what we're looking at today is, is, you know, a wall that was proposed to generate kind of a usable 10,000 square foot lot for the potential homeowner that is going to use it.
Right, so part of, part of what we look at in terms of subdivision is that we're making reasonable effort to preserve large trees and also to not have extraordinary changes in our topography. So that's why I'm trying to see where I, where we can accommodate a subdivision with not having to do, so that we can meet some of the goals what are found in our rules and regs on what we're looking at subdivision. So if you, Tim, can if you go to, back to the sheet that had the cut and fill, that, that document that had the cut and fill diagram? And I think you go to the next sheet. You know, so when we asked for what trees would need to be removed, this is what we received. But having gone out and looked at this more carefully myself, I, I don't think this represents the numbers of trees that would be impacted. And there's, there's no proposal to save a single tree in this application. And part of it has to do with, what I've talked about with most of the applications that come before us is that when you do a lot of regrading, it necessitates the removal of the trees because they can't survive in that regrading. And that's why I continue to ask about how much of that grading can be modified. And if the design, and as we've discussed last time, there are options with the way this is designed. And this applicant has not shown much willingness to change the design approach that they're taking to this because I appreciate the fact that there's been work done on the stormwater. But we asked for this to be looked at last March and what came back to us in September was largely the same as what we saw in March. So it, one last thing is if we could go back to the grading plan that was provided. So one last thing is if we could go back to the grading plan that was provided for this meeting, Tim? And we can go zoom into that wall near Ms. Klasby's property line? So if, I would be curious if Ms. Klasby's here and is willing to offer some information, whether she is aware of trees along her property line here that are close to the property, that have a big canopy that she would want to see maintained? Is that something we can ask her, April?
Hi, Dan.
I'm still here.
Yes, thank you, I'm just curious, this is your property line where your home is over here, if you can see. And I did see when I walked to the sidewalk here that there are trees along here. And I'm not sure how far back, you know, the trees go along here. I think the trees that are up at the front here will not likely be impacted. But I'm wondering what the regrading that's going on back here, whether you have any large trees that you would be concerned about in this sort of the middle of your property in the back?
There is one very large oak tree, it's right along the property line.
Do you know how far back it is?
Oh my, I don't know, the whole thing, I think, is about, let's see.
So, Tim, I have another thought, if you could go to the GIS map image that I sent you?
Cheryl, if you want to just tell me what the, well, actually, no, I'll go to the address, you don't need to tell me anything.
Yeah, and then if you just change the layer, when you get there at the bottom to the aerial view, you'll pick up the same thing that I did. Yeah, so that, right, exactly.
And then.
Yeah, so would that, would that be, that tree be somewhere in, right in there? Oops.
Yeah, where are we?
Yeah, so this is your house right here. And this is Pleasant Street out here.
Hello here.
Yeah, Tim, can you zoom in on that a little more?
Okay, I see it. Yeah, see, just about where that pointer is, there's that.
Where the tree is?
Yeah, and there's some other trees, small trees between that and Pleasant Street. I don't know, half of them are not in good shape anyway. They've just died off over the years. But there's the big oak tree, it's very tall.
Okay, so now, Tim, back to the plan, the grading plan. You're getting good at this, Tim. So this is where this retaining wall is. And that tree looks to me like, you know, the canopy was coming across like this. So I guess my concern would be that that tree could be negatively impacted by the construction of this wall. And so we're here, we're at 134, 133 is right here. So this is removing, you know, into here, it's removing some earth. So I'm wondering, Jim, if you can take a look at this such that you would not have regrading that would be impacting this tree?
Well, I'd be honest with you, you know, that wall, I mean, I can bring the grades right back to the property line and get rid of the wall and just come back down like a 2 to 1 slope and the wall's gone.
But, well, whatever the design would be, which would have the least great regrading in the vicinity of the trees, that, you know, would be what we'd be looking for.
Well, I mean, the, the, this site is really kind of generated off the road construction, where we're trying to keep that road up as high as possible. We don't want to remove as much earth as we're removing, it costs money, it takes time, and it's noisy and impacts the neighbors in that respect. It's just a factor of the land that is there and the roadway that needs to be constructed to comply with the subdivision regulations to the best situation possible. So we're at 3% coming up at 10%. And it creates a cut through that property. Then you have to build driveways. And the driveways that are coming up are also at a maximum height to minimize grading at 10%.
Which is all generated by the fact that on paper you can fit a certain number of lots by math and by lines on a piece of paper. But when you actually get to the topography and you get to the adjacent properties and the features of the property, you know, that you might have to adjust what you can maximize the site for. And that's where I'm coming from on this. So those remain my concerns.
I'm pretty confident we can save that tree that you're talking about, very confident.
And there are trees that are along Pleasant Street?
The Pleasant Street trees are all going to remain. If you look at the grading here, there is actually no proposed grading in that location, even on the other side of Pleasant Street as well. If you go back to the earthworks plan, that is shown as well that there is no cut in those locations along Pleasant Street. Unfortunately, along the driveway on Mr. Foster's property, there is a situation where we have to bring the road, the top elevation road at the cul-de-sac, we have to bring that grade all the way down to his driveway, which cuts through Lot 4 and brings it down to Lot 5. And that's kind of why we proposed the retaining wall. And we pushed the wall off the property line to protect Mr. Foster's interests to the best of our ability. It's, you know, whether, whether we, you know, be honest with you, even if we combined Lots 4 and 5 and eliminated a lot, that's not going to change the grading of the plan significantly enough to kind of remove the wall because the cul-de-sac itself would still need to be at that grade, up at that high grade. And we'd have to bring it down to that location near Pleasant Street. So I understand what you're saying, it's just, and we're, you know, we can bring the wall in a couple more feet, maybe slope, you know, maybe tier of the wall, do a couple of 2 footers instead of just 1 4 to minimize the cut.
And that sounds like you're thinking in the right direction from my point of view. And also, if you could think about it so that it's not, this is a one continuous length, but if it were not, you know, maybe a section of it, so that your planting is not such a 300 foot straight line, but they can have some variety in and out. And I guess I would, I'm curious that, you said Mr. Foster doesn't want any of those trees there, but I wonder if he recognizes the fact that he's going to have a 6 foot tall fence for that entire length of his property line now? Can you scroll down to the landscaping plan, Tim? I believe it's in this set too, this drawing set.
Yeah.
So have you talked with Mr. Foster about this landscaping plan along here with the fence and the arboretum?
And I could speak on that, I met with everybody and shared all these details back in March, tried to be proactive about this whole entire process. And they seemed to receive it fairly well. I was open to hearing any suggestions. I opened Marion and myself to this process over six months ago. And one of the things that Mr. Foster did bring up was that those leaves shed all over his yard and he's constantly trying to keep up with and trying to maintain it. So he would appreciate it if we actually removed those trees. And he was receptive to this plan. And as far as I know, most of the neighborhood was as well. And I understand your concerns of removing a bunch of trees from the property, but we are proposing to put quite a significant amount back.
Okay, so if, you know, if those trees are on your property and not Mr. Foster's, or if they're on Mr. Foster's and he's okay with removing them, I think having this wall, have adjustments to what Jim spoke about, and having a landscape plan that is acceptable to this neighbor would be a good approach. And then I think if you would agree to preserve, and we'll talk about what that means, trees there and rework this so that tree over here could be protected. And I think there's far less regrading towards this end. So I'm not, I don't think there's as much concern there. And then I would be more comfortable with this proposal if you would commit to those things.
I guess I'm not, Cheryl, can, I'm not sure what you mean by having the neighbor review and approve the landscaping and wall design, that's Mr. Foster, Mr. and Mrs. Foster? And Kyle can correct me on this, but I thought they'd already done that. Have they already looked at it, Kyle? And it sounds like you've already discussed this with them.
I opened myself to everybody I met up at the site that day. And the Fosters were included in that meeting. And I gave them my number and I spoke to them one other time. And the only thing they suggested was they would actually prefer the removal of the trees on that side. But they were well aware of the fence that was going to be going up. And they actually approved and appreciated that I was transparent about what I was doing and provided some sort of plan. And I intend to do that throughout this entire process with the whole neighborhood.
I'm not questioning, you know, your intent to do a good job. But we've had other applications where after plant projects or site plan approval or special permit or subdivisions, where things are brought to our attention after construction started. I went to visit Bent's with the fence and how the fence was installed at Bent's. The adjacent property owner was unhappy with the fence there, for example. We've had issues where when people didn't realize that a site was going to be entirely clear cut and every tree removed, and they ask, you know, how did we approve that? And so my questions really come out of what I've learned in the last five years on the planning board about how these projects can be understood one way on paper and then when they become, in the field, you know, something else in people's minds. It turns out to be different. And the further you are away in terms of your wall construction from your neighbor should help with the noise issues that a couple of the neighbors have expressed concern about. And so I think it's beneficial to think about these things a little further.
Yeah, I can agree with you there. I don't think the noise is going to come from the wall construction, being a gravity wall construction. The noise is going to come primarily from the removal of the fill and doing the ledge that's in the drainage at the front of the property. And to Ms. Klasby's point, and I spoke with Marion about this, I would provide a construction schedule. And anything that's associated with removal of ledge, I would give her fair notice and so that she could prepare. And anything we can do for noise mitigation techniques, we will do. And the town, the building department is very strict on that regard. And they put forth a bunch of restrictions on us. And basically, we have to adhere to codes and regulations to fully do that. So I can appreciate your concern with, and even so, on the side with the fence, and I hear you with Mr. Foster, maybe people aren't interpreting it right. That's, I thought in behalf, why we provided the elevation drawings from Jim Burke that shows the fence on one side, what it would look like, and shows the fence on the opposite side, what it would look like from our property. That was to try to provide more clarity.
Right, right. Mr. Harnish, what type of excavation equipment are you planning to use? Again, sort of remembering what I saw up at Milton Woods or the Pulte property, was some huge equipment. And granted, that's a much bigger site. But given that this site is close to, at least it's over half a dozen homes that are right up against this site, would you commit to using the smallest type of excavation equipment that you could to get this work done rather than bringing in some very large equipment that might generate more noise?
I mean, we're still going to have to operate heavy machinery. That's not something that we can avoid here by the fill. I think we can condense it in a short period of time compared to something of the scope of Pulte, where they essentially cleared an entire forest and then built a massive, massive structure. So, you know, I don't think we'll have the same amount of equipment. Traditionally in town, I mean, the construction that I do, single family homes in town, it's not going to be anything we wouldn't see on a single family site.
Sorry, Marion, is that something that, and Mr. Harnish, you could document what you expect that equipment to be? So that it's part of the construction management plan?
I wouldn't do that, only because you don't know what you're running into in a sense that you want to make sure the expression, the right tool for the job exists for a reason.
Understood, but there might be two tools that work and one might be noisier than the other, or one might cause more vibration than the other. And you want to choose the one that has the less impact on your neighbor, right?
Yeah, you know, that's certainly reasonable, you don't want to go over, you know, use it, you know.
I think part, so, I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But I think that part and parcel, why I was willing, and I told Marion that this was important to me, to give some reassurance to the neighbors and especially Ms. Klasby, was the removal of the blasting language entirely. Like, that is not a procedure, not a technique I'm willing to use at all. And I understand that that brings anxiety and stress to all the neighbors and all that stuff. So I'm willfully, there is no issue in which I would entertain that. So that's kind of where I'm at with that. In regards to the machines, I'm going to do the best I possibly can. And if anybody has any concerns, and I'm willing to hear them and willing, you know, put myself out there for them to reach out to me directly. And I'll be as transparent as I can. I mean, that's the best I think I can offer.
I mean, I have to say, I would be a little uncomfortable being that prescriptive in the permit to say what can and can't be used as far as equipment for a variety of reasons. But one being, you know, during the nature of construction, things change and equipment changes and conditions change. And I wouldn't want our board have to continue to hear this product over and over again every time a piece of equipment has to change. I don't know that that's practical.
I'm sorry, April, go ahead.
I'm just going to ask you if you had other things to add or if we can move on to someone else.
I'm sorry, just one last thing on that point, April. If we could have language that just said that the, that equipment choices will be made that will have the least impact on noise and vibration and dust for neighboring properties, something to that effect.
Yeah, and I mean, I also want to be aware that I think Ms. Klasby's comment was she wanted to reduce the timeframe that that would be happening.
Right.
So it was a choice between, you know, different pieces of equipment and you're going to take a lesser grade of equipment that has a little bit less noise, but was going to take two months to finish versus something that might have a little bit more noise, but could be done in two days. I think everybody would agree we'd prefer the latter than the former. So I think we definitely can work something in here to address the issue of Ms. Klasby and some of the other butters who have concern about noise, which I think is very understandable given the proximity of existing residences. And I think what Mr. Harnish has said has, seems to me like he has a willingness to work with the neighborhood. And I think we can do what we've done in some other projects to provide contact information both inside and outside of construction hours. So if there are issues, they can be addressed immediately and work with Joe Prandak to figure out what kind of language we can include here so that it's an enforceable noise provision. Okay, so let's move on. And how about we move to Rich? Do you have comments or questions for the applicant, Rich?
I don't, I don't right now, nope. I just, thank you, Cheryl, that was, I agree with everything you said. I mean, I really liked the, how thoroughly you went through that, so thank you.
Kathleen, I'll move on to you next because I know you had those particular questions about the declaration. And I'm curious to know if your interest is satisfied with the.
Well, yes, I just wanted to make sure that the cost of maintaining those wonderful fences and all those retaining walls was part of the common expense of all the homeowners' associations. I've seen too many cases where retaining walls between properties are not maintained and nobody will figure out how to pay for it. So that's been addressed. And as I said, I did revise the easement language to include access to the town for its conservation land behind there. And just did another couple of things to fix that up. I agree with Cheryl on the sort of the issue about the trees, thinking. Thinking of, I read all Denny's proposed zoning changes on tree proposals, you know, protection and all that sort of stuff. And I'd really like to see us include conditions in the permit that would protect the trees along Pleasant Street and the trees between the property and Ms. Klasby's property, because I think that will help her in terms of the noise mitigation and all that sort of thing. But I think keeping in mind that they construct in a way that doesn't impact those trees over time, I think would be something I'd like to see as a condition.
Did you say Danny?
Hi, Jen.
Thank you, Kathleen. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt Kathleen, but thank you. I, um, thank you for reading those rules and regulations that I've been working on. I, I thought, I might like to pass along the International Society of Arboretum Culture documents that I've been referring to in the rules and regulations to the, to the applicant about avoiding tree damage during construction, treatment of trees during construction, damaged by construction, and planting, new tree planting. It's just some guidelines that I think might be helpful. It's something I'm going to propose for future construction. And I wanted to also sort of apologize and explain that normally, when we're not in a pandemic, we're a little bit more organized, and that we would have gotten out to a site walk much, much earlier. And we haven't done that. And I, and I have to say, I think it's mainly because of the pandemic. But, so I was a little bit surprised to see those pictures that Cheryl took with all those trees, because I was just picturing these like shrubby little things based on the description back in March. But I can understand when, what, some people see a shrubby little tree, other people see, you know, a glorious treasure. So that can happen in, without going on a site walk. So, and also, our thinking on trees has been advancing, and, and our protective language is a little bit behind. So, so your application sort of got lost in that. So, um, if I could see some of those visuals that Cheryl took, Tim, if you're still, if you still have access to those three photographs that Cheryl did.
And can I get to you in 45 seconds? I need to.
Yes, absolutely, take your time.
Hold, hold on, hold on, just for a minute. I need to put the deputy town planner on the other side of the room.
Well, you do that, I just wanted to thank and, and sort of reiterate a lot of what Cheryl was saying and Kathleen. I do think that that buffer for Ms. Klasby is, is key. One thing that I sort of got out of the letters that were sent to us by the two neighbors was, as electeds, I think we have to be super sensitive to the fact that the citizens and neighbors around the town, you know, we're all sort of in the same boat. In, in my house, you know, my husband's on Zoom calls in his office. My daughter's doing her college Zoom from her bedroom, and I'm on, in my bedroom doing Zoom calls. And if, if I had a construction going on 20 or 30 feet away, and I have nowhere to go, I, I, I did really, I, I really did feel for both of these neighbors writing in. This is, we're in some crazy times here. And, and it makes these kind of projects even trickier. So, okay, back to the trees. The second tree, I guess it's the second one with the Cloud, looking at the Klasbury property. If you look at the tree, okay, the next one. Yeah, if you could go to the next one, Tim. Okay, the next one. That one, okay. So if you look in the middle of the photograph, the, um, the trees coming, the branches coming out over the property, that is the drip line. When you look at the, I'm blanking on the word, but the way the tree comes out, everything under the top of the tree down, almost to, in front of that red brick, that red building, that's the drip line. So the, the roots are underneath that drip line, all the way out as far as the branches at the top of the tree. So that's, that's a, a large area to protect. But that's if, if, if we were doing this as, as best as we could, we would, we would try to not pull that earth out underneath that tree if we wanted to protect that tree. So that's, that's the ideal way to do that. Some, sometimes you can get away with going in a third. And, and sometimes some trees are more resistant, and you can get away with further. But, but there are practices that we'd like to follow as best as we possibly can with trees that we want to preserve. So, and, and back to, um, and normally what we would have done is we would have asked for a tree inventory, and then we'd ask for a tree management plan. I, so I leave that up to Cheryl if she wants to talk about that further. But I think if we give these guidelines and work with where we are, we might be able to work through that. But as far as construction noise, I did appreciate that the developer said that he would give a heads up to the neighbors and try to tell them when, when he's going to be closest to their properties, and for how long, and so forth. I don't know if we can make that a condition, but if there could be some language in there so that that would happen. And then I am interested to hear about any noise buffers or mitigation. I didn't know if Tim Truwinski could give any suggestions on that, as, you know, he has more experience with these tighter construction projects that happen within residential areas than I do. And then in addition to that, I noticed that in the construction management plan, it says construction noise can start at 7:00 a.m. They didn't see an end time. And I didn't know if during these, you know, pandemic times, if 7:00 a.m. is ideal, or if Joe Prondak would kill us if we deviated from the norm. So these are all things I was thinking about. I don't know how other people or the applicant or Marion would like to, I'm sorry, I keep calling you the applicant, I should call you Mr. Harnish, would like to weigh in on any of those topics.
Marion, do you have a response to any of these items?
I'll try to go backwards, starting with the most recent. On the, on the worktimes, we did discuss the worktimes with neighbors. This goes back to March, you know, it's a long time span that we've been talking about this project. And I know they didn't, they asked if we could not have work on Sunday, and that was, that we changed the work hours. We weren't intending to do work on Sunday anyway, but we put that in the construction management plan.
Yeah, I saw that.
The times that are in here are, I believe there's a, there's a start and a stop time.
Yes, there is, I think it's seven to five.
Yes, and I believe those are reasonable times for construction. You know, that, there are also construction limitations. There, there are rules in the construction management plan about not starting trucks up before seven, not having trucks sit there idling their motors before seven, and that sort of thing. I think in terms of the construct, the construction noise, I think the particular issue that I'm hearing from Mrs. Klasby about is the breaking up of rock, which is the noise, probably one of the noisiest things you have to do on a construction site. And that we have talked to her about providing notice, can try to consolidate the times when rock is going to be broken up, telling her ahead of time when that's going to occur so she can try to make some plans. I can't really respond to the issues about construction buffers. I don't know whether the developer or the engineer might be able to respond to that. On the tree inventory and the tree management plan, we, we produced, we have a landscape architect who produced a landscaping, perimeter landscaping plan at the beginning of this project. We made a few modifications to that plan based on deer resistance in certain trees and that kind of thing. But basically, we have, we have documented that we would be removing onsite approximately 30 trees, that we will be planting onsite approximately 67 trees. And so we are planting many more trees than we're removing, and we're planting some really beautiful trees on this site. I understand all the concerns about protecting perimeter trees, looking at the canopy and the root spread, and what we can do to keep from killing trees on neighboring properties. I think the engineer has tried to address how we might be able to do that. So I don't have anything to add to that. But I, but I do believe that the tree, the landscaping plan and the tree removal plan that we have provided meets the requirements or, or the usual requirements of the planning board in terms of showing what it is we'll do to restore trees on the site after construction. The, let's see. Okay, those are all my comments for the moment. I'll wait and see what other questions it might be.
For the, for the sake of discussion, I, I did look at the tree replacement, and I think it's, it's a, it's a good start that, that you offered that. Something like 34 out of 67 are the arborvitae along the edge, which I do think is a nice, fences make good neighbors, arborvitae's make good neighbors too. So that's, that's all well and good. But so, in a sense, you're basically replacing tree for tree. You know, if there are 30 some odd trees, and you're also, you know, the trees that you've offered are somewhat equivalent. Some of them are smaller, you know, they're, they're only going to grow to eight to 12 feet, so they're more, in a way ornamental, as opposed to tree, tree trees. So you, you have a, you are replacing trees, so I do, I do appreciate that. In wetland areas, you know, you have to do a three to one. This is something that I'm thinking about as we review our rules and regulations and tree bylaw, is that generally, for the planning board, we're thinking about doing three to one replacements in the future. But having, we didn't bring that up at the beginning of this project. I don't want to throw this applicant for a loop. But, but, but I did look at the tree list, it's a good tree list. And, and it was good, good of you to be ahead of it. So I, I thank you for that.
Um, so I would suggest that, well, I have a couple of questions. This is really for Kyle Harnish. When do you expect to get going on your project, assuming it's approved? And how long is the build-out going to take?
I'd like to get started as soon as possible, to be honest with you.
I did see your schedule, it was the fall.
And how long do you expect to be under construction?
Two years perhaps, three?
And that won't be continuous three years of construction? It will be.
As he sells the houses, yeah.
Yeah, as I sell, as I sell, I mean, it, the pandemic alone has put me in a, in a great financial strain. So there's a lot of issues that are underlying outside of this. So it's a financial thing for me as well, under a ton of duress with it. So holding it for a year now, now I'm eager to get going. And the sooner I can get this accomplished is not only good for me, but I think good for everybody. And that is my intention, to get it done as quickly as possible.
How long will it take for you to get your road in and your utilities in?
Three months, probably.
Okay.
I think it's important for us, and that's, I know the timing, obviously, we're heading into fall here. That's not including if there's implications of weather. You know, the sooner we can get going, then the sooner we can guarantee that we're done quicker on the road. That's my primary concern with this, being Pleasant Street, you know, a fairly active street, and with kids going to school and all that. I really would prefer not to be doing this in the winter. I feel like it just complicates things greatly, trying to get going as soon as possible.
I was asking to give the neighborhood kind of an understanding of what the construction flow will be. So it won't be three years of continuous daily construction. I think that three-month window in the initial stage is probably where there'll be significant disruption with removing rock and putting in the roads and taking down, you know, the trees that need to come down and putting in the walls. That would probably be where the folks would see the first initial bout of, of noise disruption. And then there could be some period of time where there's nothing. The neighborhood to know that it won't be a daily, I mean, it's highly, highly unlikely to be a daily activity. And if it is, it certainly won't take three years. Okay, so the other, so, I mean, I'm interested in the board's thoughts. It sounds as though Cheryl's asked for revisions to plans, a revised landscape plan, a revised grading plan, and adjustment to the wall along Mr. Foster's property to provide gaps for the land, for an adjusted landscaping. We've heard that there are some priority trees that we would like to see preserved along Pleasant Street and the Klasby property, that we don't really, I don't, I don't think we need to ask you to do a full tree inventory of your site at this juncture, but I do think it might help to inventory just those two target areas so that there's something enforceable in our permit. So if you could do that, I think it would be good. And if you could provide us some information on how you might manage to preserve those trees for the long term, I think that would be helpful as well. Are there other follow-ups that the board would like to offer? Because it doesn't sound as though we're going to get to a decision tonight.
I didn't know if Tim Truwinski is, is done with his little assistant. But does he have any sound mitigation ideas?
Yeah, I've been, I've been, I've been done for a while.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't put my camera on just because I'm, sometimes he comes by. You know, honestly, I, my, my concern with all of this is always the, the enforceability of some of these provisions. And it's not because I'm not concerned with the noise impacts. I'm quite concerned with the noise impacts. But I don't want to put the board and town staff in a position where we're, we're making assurances that we can't back up. I think that erodes people's trust in this work. And so I want to sort of be very thoughtful about the types of provisions that we put in. And quite frankly, what, what I think would be more effective than, you know, talking about specific either pieces of equipment or, or, you know, the size or, or decibel levels is really just, you know, having construction, and especially, you know, as April was alluding to, some of those really tough, you know, intensive construction activities, you know, happening in as, as limited a timeframe on a day-to-day basis as possible, you know, so that there is, you know, a respite at some point during the day that, you know, even on a calendar basis, we're not necessarily talking about three years worth of, you know, site work, but even on a day-to-day basis, that it's not an all-day activity, if that's at all possible. You know, that strikes me as the, the most reasonable type of thing to put into provision. I think it achieves the goals of, of the neighborhood. And I think, you know, hopefully, as, as best as we can, the goals of the development team. And, and it strikes me also as kind of the most enforceable. I, I'm going to be 100% perfectly frank. You know, we can, we can drop by the site. The building inspector can drop by the site. But, you know, a lot of these enforcement things also do depend on folks in the neighborhood. You know, we do get, you know, calls about construction. We, we act on them when we get them. And so setting down the clearest possible, you know, reasonable timeframes for intensive construction, and then making sure that everyone is aware of them, it strikes me as, as, as the most effective mitigation, because there are trade-offs. I don't want to use the term "it's life in the big city", like I used to in my old job, it's life in a small town. But it is still, you know, this is a, an activity that is allowed under the planning board's rules and regulations. And eventually, these will be house lots that are allowed under zoning. So we do have to explore the trade-offs between allowing a property owner to, to build a, a project, and also, you know, having the least amount of impacts on the neighborhood. And so I think, you know, setting those limitations on, on time. You know, having the least amount of impacts on the neighborhood and so I think, um, you know, setting those limitations on, on time and, and. Um, you know, on, on, on a day-to-day basis. And again, just making sure communication, um, is, is really clear and robust, uh, would probably be the most effective, uh, mitigation. You know, if, if there's a way, you know, as you're doing your site work, I don't know kind of what the, the, the sequence will be. Um, but to, to Ms. Klasby's point, you know, if you can put some type of, you know, a pile, will, will attenuate that noise. Uh, I don't think that necessarily the, the entire kind of schedule and. And, you know, concept of the project should change, uh, to do that, but I think if it's, if it's an option. Um, to, you know, store some earth on one side of the site while you're doing work on another, that's, that would be nice. Um, but again, I think if it makes the project go a lot longer, um, that's probably something that you wouldn't be interested in, so. You know, there, there are trade-offs between, you know, again, having that respite during the day and also just getting the bad stuff over with as soon as possible. Um, that, that I think, you know, is really the balance the project needs to strike.
Thank you, Tim. Um, so I just want to make sure with the development team that you're clear on what Cheryl was asking. Jim, are you clear on what Cheryl was asking for the grading and the adjustment to the wall?
What I, what I, I hear is protection of trees, existing trees and, uh, um. My plan is to talk it over with Kyle and, and Marion and, and, uh, figure out the best approach with regards to limiting cut, uh, around existing vegetation. That's what I heard.
Okay, great, and you know, and I think we were specifically talking about two target areas, um.
Yes, I think, I think the, the Pleasant Street, along Pleasant Street's fine, I don't think there's really a lot of mitigation required along there. And, and for Mrs. Klasby, I think that's an easy fix as well, it's only a two-foot wall. Um, vertically and, uh, the, the trick is, the trick is going to be along, uh, Bob Foster's driveway. And, uh, and let's see how we can, uh, you know, kind of reduce that, uh. That, that wall that, that, that I, that I believe is necessary to, to provide an appropriate lot for potential buyers. So I'll, I'll take a look at it, talk it over with, uh, uh, Kyle and Marion and we'll see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I, I just want to add to that, Jim, and everybody, because. I hope you're clear on it because I'm not too clear as far as the Foster's line goes.
Yeah.
The Fosters don't, I, first I hear that the Fosters don't want even to keep their trees that are along the lot line. I mean, does it matter what the neighbors want?
I don't think we were talking about the trees along Foster's line, we're talking about protecting the tree by Ms. Klasby, the oak. And the trees by her line and the ones on Pleasant Street. And just, I think Cheryl could correct me, but Cheryl was talking about making that retaining wall along Foster. Look less, you know, institutional by having it being a straight run with no sort of changes in, 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 in shape and stuff like that. I think that's what, I don't think she was talking, we weren't talking about protecting the trees on that side because we, you seem to be pretty clear about the fact that Mr. Foster doesn't want them. But to make that less, um, aggressive looking than.
You want to make breaks in the wall.
Breaks in the wall, something, you know, I don't know if Mr. Foster, uh, would understand that. It's a three-hundred-foot-long fence, six feet tall along the entire property line. And so even if it's all arborvitae, it's like a very, very consistent appearance. So that's what, you know, Jim, when he was speaking earlier and said that he thought he could do some grading and work with that wall a bit more. And I said that I thought would make, um, make a difference. Um, and then the other thing was just to make some variety along that length, whether it's a break in the wall, maybe part of the wall becomes, turns in. And then it picks up again, it, you know, it's a line on a piece of paper right now, but visually it could have, you know. Even when you're coming down Pleasant Street to see, you'll see it, I mean, it's a. I guess I'm, you know, I was trying to get these drawings and these photos to help people visualize what I see when I see that line on the piece of paper. And so I think, Jim, you understood what I was talking about.
Yeah, I think, I think the vis, the, the wall visually from Pleasant Street, uh, the majority of it's going to be blocked by the house and honestly. By the existing vegetation because you're not going to see it heading towards Eaton Square because it's going to be cut in. Um, you're going to see the fence. Um, so as you're coming up and heading towards vents, um, you're going to see. You know, the veg, the, the road and the vegetation along Pleasant Street, you're not going to see the wall. But I understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm talking about like Mr. Foster too, if he visualizes a six-foot fence along his entire property line, that's sitting on top of a wall. Um, in any case.
It's not above ground, I mean, but I understand what you're saying, it's, it's a, a line of fence all the way along the lot line. So, but I do want to include him in that discussion because he had an opinion about this and it seemed as though he wanted it, so I. I just think we should be careful because he's not participating now in this discussion.
Yeah, so I, I think it's worthy of just revisiting that with him, either Kyle or Marion or someone, just to make sure that he is aware of what the site, the fence will look like and. Whether or not he has any concerns about that, I mean, what I'd like to do is get all of this wrapped up so that we can make a decision on the eighth. I understand you're anxious to get this going, um. And I, I feel as though we've really talked through all of the issues and we should be prepared to make a decision on the eighth if we can get. Everybody on the same page, um.
You want language in the construction management plan about, um, noise and notice about noise or would you just do a condition? Okay, so you want me, I, I can add a, a section on that or add it to one section.
I think it'd be best to put it in the construction plan.
I do too, and I think you should be able to provide a point of contact for the butters.
Well, that's requi, I thought that was.
That's in there.
That's already in.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, okay, did, Kyle, I'm sorry, did you have one more thing to say? Yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a request because I, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, if I'm going to go back to the neighbors and talk with them again, especially in particular with Mr. Foster, that. When we come back to another meeting, I'm not going to get some other question or some other thing, if everybody is clear about what you're. You know, requesting of me, I'd like to provide you with as much detail as possible and. I thought we've done that to this point, but this week it was something that I wasn't prepared for compared to two weeks ago, so I'm. I'm just trying to get this thing buttoned up for you guys and I'm willing to do anything to do that. Um, so I just don't want to keep going back to the neighbors, I feel like I'm bothering them, I, I, I'm not even confident without a full set of plans. Um, that I can, that I can discuss with them because I don't want to be moving the goalposts on them, I don't feel that that's fair. So I talked to Mr. Foster originally about it, I will bring it up to him again and, and, and. Express Cheryl's concern with the, with the long wall, but if he expresses that he doesn't mind it and he'd like to see the fence the way it's drawn, then. I mean, that's how I would propose it back to the board here in two weeks, so, um, I'm just hopeful that we can come to some conclusion to this, I, I, as I mentioned, obviously, I'm a. Financial distress. Timeliness of this and how long it's taking, so I just want to be prepared fully for the next meeting and if there's anything else that needs to be addressed or that you guys need more information on, I, I appreciate clarity so that I can understand.
And I think that's fair, so is there anything else anybody wants to add before we move on to the next? Yes, Denny?
Um, I, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Harnish, and I'm sorry that this process has been long and involved and, and new information has come up here and there. Um. I, I did want to say a, a simple solution, if you need it, might be to break it up even, I noticed you had tulip trees in your plan, if, if you even just. Put, you know, a third of the way in, you put a tulip tree and then. A, a third of the way further and you put another tulip tree, something like that might break up the, the straight line effect of it. Um, so it might be a, the solution might be in the landscaping as well as some of the ideas that, um, Cheryl was suggesting. Uh, just, just a thought, if it's helpful, take it or leave it.
And I, I was going to ask you about that too because you were mentioning the arborvitae. So yeah, I mean, sometimes it's a simpler way to solve it, but in any case, I think we get, I understand better. I hope every, I don't know, I hope Kyle does. Um, what it is you want, it, it need to be as clear as possible because we want to try to provide what you need for the next meeting and.
So Marion, just make sure the one point is that we need to know what kind of trees are along Pleasant Street, where they are, how they're going to be preserved.
The ones that are there now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I mean, I don't think we have, we have no way to reference what's there.
Right, but, I mean, yes, all right, so we'll document the trees along Pleasant now. If they.
And Mrs. Klasby's.
We will tell you.
Klasby's.
Yes.
Those two spots.
Right. Well, Mrs. Klasby on her property, you mean?
The oak tree, so tree that you're going to keep and along her side and the ones on Pleasant.
Right, she has a large oak, we know that, we can show the location of that tree. And we'll try to show what measures we can take to protect it, that's what you'd like us to do, Mrs. Klasby has asked. Well, I think you've asked on her behalf about that.
Yeah.
I understand that and that we didn't really, we haven't described, I didn't know the answer was in the Pleasant Street trees, so we'll give you that answer. Um, if some of them are not, uh. If some of them are, are dead or something like that.
Well, just, we don't know because you haven't told us is the problem, so we wanted to put a condition in the special permit that said. We want to protect the trees along Pleasant Street, we don't know what we're protecting because we don't have that information. So the, the landscaping plan didn't give that kind of detail, so, you know.
I mean, we, we did give a plan of trees to be removed, but I think the ones along Pleasant were not documented because they aren't that, they weren't as big. We'll do what you want, we'll document them.
Yes, so I mean, in fairness to the applicant, we didn't ask for that at the last meeting, so that is new information and I. Add, but now we will, um, and we'll hopefully sew this up on the eighth. So I, unless anybody has anything to add, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, okay, then let's take a, we're going to change a motion to, um. Continue this meeting to seven oh five on Octo, on October eighth.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, second, yeah.
Let's take a roll call vote, um, Cheryl Taggias.
Yes.
Rich Beeler.
Yes.
Um, Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
April Anderson, yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just chime in real quick? Um, just for the, the viewing public at home, uh.
You're breaking up.
Time and date certain, um, so that we don't have to put it in the news. Sorry.
Seven oh five.
I have to try, I have to.
We did a seven oh five.
Yeah, so, so what I, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to make clear to everybody is that, um, we have talked about having our zoning discussion as the first item on the agenda. So while the hearing is scheduled for seven oh five, um, it's the prerogative of the board to. Bump that to later on in the, uh, in the meeting, uh, to accommodate other agenda items, so I just want to make sure everyone's expectations are very clear. About when we'll probably wind up getting started on this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to, um, I'm going to move things around because I do see, I think I still see Carol Stalker and I know she's waiting. On Eight Parkway Drive, um, so if, Tim, you could just describe to us what this item is and then we can, um, we can discuss Eight Parkway Drive.
Yeah, so, um, in brief, I, I, I've been trying to, to read up on, on, on this issue, um. And I think a lot of you lived it, um, in a way that I did not, but fortunately, um. Allison's predecessor, um, in the assistant town planner seat, uh, put together a helpful memo and, and timeline about, about the, the issue. Um, there's a house lot at Eight Parkway Drive, um, that was, uh, built upon and, uh, it's a, it's a funny little spot because. Um, there's a significant patch of, of town-owned land, um, from the, the edge of Hillside Street to the property line. That, um, you know, if you looked at it, you wouldn't necessarily know, but if you hired a surveyor to build a house, for instance. Um, y- y- you would know, um, I don't know how it happened, but a bunch of those trees, um, that used to be there were, were, were cut down. Um, inadvertently, according to the developer, um, you know, and that initiated, um, if I go by the minutes, um, quite a long process of. Trying to rectify that issue. Um, so what, what ended up happening, uh, was, um, and this is all the memo, a kind of three-part mitigation plan or. Uh, mitigation is not the right word, but you can imagine what the word would be. Um, contribution to our, um, shade tree fund essentially. Um, money to, um, or it would be actually in-kind contribution, uh, of new trees and shrubs on that land. Plus, um, an irrigation system to make sure that there was, um, water on those trees. And then a twelve-thousand-dollar, um, purity bond, um, for a, a period of three years to provide, um. You know, a backstop for any maintenance work that would need to be done to make sure that there's new plantings, um, survived. Um, so I, I, I'm going to, I think defer to Denny and, and Ms. Stalker, um, who brought this issue to my attention. For kind of what the specific, um, discussion point is. And then, um, once we have that, we can kind of move on into, you, um, kind of what the mechanics of that would.
Okay. Is, is Carol here? Carol, do you?
I am here, my, 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 my image seems to, seems to have disappeared.
Oh, okay.
I'm here, and I, and I think Jason Benziken, the president of the Hillside Neighbor Association, may also be here. Are you on, Jason?
I do see his name. Oh, there you are, Jason, hi.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Well.
Um, Carol, did you want to read through your notes? You had done a very, very good job.
Well, you know, and the, 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 this was, um, a large section, um, thousands of square feet where. Thirty-three mature trees were, were clear-cut. And it wasn't just a few trees you moved, it was a clear-cutting of a large area along a historic and scenic road without any authorization, any permitting. Um, and in fact, it was all very mysterious because it was done while the developer was on vacation in Ireland. Um, and it was kind of a little secretive as to who actually did it and why. Um, so it was not, it was not innocuous because it, um, and, but it defaced the neighborhood. And, um. Uh, so there, there was this finding that they would, uh, because there was no justification, it was completely illegal. The only thing is they thought maybe we wouldn't notice because Bill Clark, who was the director, uh, of development at that point, told the neighbors that the setback was only five feet. And we, we took him at his word for many months and then I looked it up on the map and saw that the setback was twenty-five feet. And, uh, so, uh, so at that point we raised a ruckus. Um, and, uh, and, you know. Bill said there was a misunderstanding, that he'd given them permission, but they hadn't communicated well, anyway, there was no authorization, no, no permit. And, um, so we have twelve-thousand dollars in escrow and, uh, in this. Shocking situation where you have one of the, one of the scenic roads of, of Milton being totally defaced and it be, well. So, so they, the, we, they, they replanted seventeen of the thirty-three mature trees they had cut down and about eighty shrubs. And we were, and the planning board, three years ago, asked the, two and a half years ago, asked the Hillside Neighbor Association. To monitor it and report on it because, um, uh, Branch Lane declined to do so. Um, you know, being not sure what his situation would be over a three-year period. Um, and so this is, this, this is that report. And we have twelve-thousand dollars in escrow to ensure the, uh, survival of this, of this planting. Um, the, the three trees that look like they are in, in danger, and I took Maggie Oldfield over to look at them. Uh, two days ago and she said, yes, they may not make it through the winter. Um, they're the three trees that are at the right-hand side at the corner of Parkwood and Hillside. Um, and the, all these trees are along Hillside, there's nothing planted on Parkwood, this is a restoration of the, of the scenic road. Um, these trees may not make it, uh, so we'd like an extension of the escrow funds until July because, um. The, the planning board that made this assertion was meeting in April, so they said, well, the three years are up in April. But we won't know if the trees are alive in April because trees do not leaf out that early in the year. Um, at, at, most trees do not leaf out that early in the year, so we actually need an extension of a few months to see, one, did they survive the winter and two, get them planted, replanted if they didn't. And I hope we do not have to replant them because that's a hassle I just assume, ignore. I mean, not, I don't want to replant, replant them, I want those trees to live, but I want to know that they lived and not. Have the three years run out, run out in April and then in May. have, the three years run out in April and then in May we see they didn't leaf out. Because that would be very frustrating after all the work that the neighborhood has done to engender this restitution. So that's, that's one, one request that I have, to extend the period of escrow from April to July of 2021 to give us a chance to make sure these trees are alive and.
No, excuse me, can I just ask, excuse me, just ask a question through, through April? Is there, I didn't see an agreement, an escrow agreement that had a date other than this email that says it's November 2020. So is there an actual agreement, an escrow agreement for this?
There was. You'd have to ask Bill Clark. Unfortunately, I did ask Bill Clark, but I didn't, I never received one. But there was one that was discussed in various meetings. There's at least a verbal agreement and there is a check in a safe. So there's, there's an agreement and it's been stated at public meetings. I, I don't know what, if anything, he got in writing because he never provided it to me even though I asked for it.
Yeah, Kathleen, to that point, what I have is what's in Lauren Major's memo.
I got that, you know, with the, yeah, I read all that. Okay, I'm sorry. I just started to interrupt you. But, but I just wanted to know whether there, you know, get an extension to what? You know, unfortunately, as a lawyer, I'm always like, well, you know. What are we extending?
This was a verbal pronouncement by the planning board so that this builder could get his permits for building because he hadn't built the house yet.
Okay.
So he was being very cooperative.
I bet.
And he agreed to everything the planning board asked. And this was one of the things that the planning board asked.
So we can, and Carol, Carol, I do, I do appreciate you coming and kind of providing some additional background here. It may, it may be necessary to go back. We have the minutes from all the meetings where this was discussed, but obviously the minutes are not a transcript, so it may make sense for us to go back and kind of try to pinpoint the exact language. We've got some emails. The, the, the April date is the, this is actually the first I'm hearing about that April date. I'm looking at the memo that the Assistant Town Planner had provided that talks about a three-year period that concludes in November. Which, you know, again, if, if there's, if we have some documentation or some, some video recording that says that we can sort of ascertain that April date, you know, happy to, to, to work with that. The, the, the other thing that I think.
Can I just respond to that too? Which is there, the, so I was at the meeting, the meeting was in the April meeting of the planning board. And it was April of 2018, so nineteen twenty, twenty-one is when it would, the three years would be up. It was April, April 2018 was the meeting. And just before the street tree committee, which was testifying at the meeting, because we had met with the developer and worked out an agreement, went in, we were informed that there was not going to be any video of that meeting because for some magical reason, that the video camera needed routine maintenance the night of the planning board meeting. So I took copious notes, being a retired Boston Globe reporter, and I called up the Milton Times afterwards and I said, I'm sorry, there's no video. I got the transcript of the notes from the person who takes notes there and it was very nothing. So I called her up, the publisher, Pat Desmond of the Milton Times, and I said, gee, there's no video. They had to do routine maintenance. And she said, what? She said, that never happens. We at the Milton Times depend upon the video to write our stories. And she said, this is very fishy, Carol. And then she said, would you like to write it for us since you, I, I am a correspondent for the Milton Times. I write for them frequently. And I had been there and taken notes. So I wrote my notes up and it was published on the front page of the Milton Times. And that is, I think, the only record mysteriously.
Actually, I'm sorry.
This has been the scariest all along.
So anyway.
I'm sorry, I have it from, we discussed this at the H and A meeting in January. This was discussed in both the March eighth, 2018 meeting and it appears explicitly in the third, April 12th, 2018 minutes from this board's meetings.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But as I said, all, I'm, as I said, as a lawyer and a real estate attorney for quite a long time, I'm sitting here looking at where's, where's the agreement? Is there an agreement? And normally when you have an agreement for putting up a bond for something, you say, okay, fine, here are the terms and this is how long you're going to hold it. This is what you can touch it for. Now, I don't know whether Mr. Caneely is asking for his money back in November 2020. I don't know how much is left in the account. But, you know, it seems to me, we've got, the only thing I can see in writing says November 2020. And so that's year three, according to this memo from Bill Clark and Nancy Latanzio. So I don't know, does, Mr. Caneely probably doesn't even own that house anymore. He sold it ages ago. So we don't know where the money would be going back to. We don't know how much is there. And so it seems to me that, you know, we have minutes, but that's not, you know, that's not particularly comforting to me.
I think what we need to do is have Tim go back, do some research. I don't know, Tim, if you have access to Bill Clark. Maybe there's a way to contact him and find out where this information would be, if there's some sort of agreement.
I mean, April, I, I, I suspect that there's not.
I will say that I suspect there was not too, because when Melinda Collins, who's a selectman, asked Bill Clark about the agreement, which Denny had asked for and got no response, Bill Clark said to Melinda Collins, there is no agreement because there's nothing in writing.
So a couple, a couple of things here that I want to address. You know, first of all, I, I understand that the situation is a kind of, it was, it was a bad situation back in 2018. I have 100, beyond 100,000% confidence in our partners at Milton Access TV that their camera was in fact in for routine maintenance and that there was nothing nefarious about that. So I understand the appearance and I understand people's interpretations of those things, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we recognize that those guys worked very hard for us. And, and, you know, Carol, we do appreciate you taking such copious notes and I'll actually be interested to, to look through our records of the Milton Times so I can, I can check out your account. You know, Kathleen is, is, is our legal advisor on this board right now and she, that's an informal title. And, and so I, I do, you know, I, I will defer to her judgment on, on things like this. But I mean, I think if we can start to piece together a kind of evidentiary kind of body of, okay, the minutes reflect a discussion in April and contemporaneous accounts reflect the discussion in April. We can start to maybe back into, you know, a timeline, you know, if, if an agreement doesn't exist, which again, I suspect that it doesn't. You know, what the planning board decides to do with that is, is kind of up to the planning board. What, what I will say is that we're kind of, it's a, it's a very funny situation that the, the bond, and I'll, I'll use air quotes once on that one.
It's not a bond.
Is three.
It's not a bond.
It's, it's.
It's not a bond. It was a verbal agreement.
Can I, can I continue, please? Because there is, if, once I get to the end of this, you'll have all the information. It, it is three, $4,000 checks that are in the safe in the treasurer's office. I've spoken with the town treasurer about this. He, you know, can, can get the bank on the phone tomorrow, but I think we all suspect that those checks are void at this point, after however long. This isn't traditionally how sort of declining surety bond is kept. So once we get to a situation where we kind of are comfortable with, okay, here's the general contours of this agreement, you know, here's the start date, here's the end date. I kind of think that the, the mechanics of this are just asking Mr. Caneely for the money that's necessary for a whatever sort of weeding or mulching or maintenance activity has to happen. And B, whatever replacement trees need to be purchased because I, I kind of, we can check, but I, I don't, I don't know if those checks are any good anymore. And quite honestly, after having some conversations with town council about this, I'm not entirely confident of how we would get the, the cash from the check into, Carol, your hands to make any purchases that you need to. I, I don't know what the legal sort of just steps of that are. If it goes into the planning board account and then the planning board makes a disposition or if it goes directly. I just don't know how it would happen, just the sort of the way that this bond was kind of, you know, done. So it may be, you know, Mr. Caneely gets that 12,000 bucks back at the end of the term. That's how the, the bond works. So, you know, we may just be in a position where it's just talking to him directly and saying like, hey, here's, here's an invoice for, for whatever, or here's what we expect, you know, these things to cost. Because again, the, the, the mechanics of freeing up that cash from those checks is, we could probably figure it out, but at this point, there's not a very clear path for that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think it doesn't sound like he has any motivation for, for following through in his cooperation if he's built his house and who sold it and he's got his permits from the planning board. So.
Well, I just have a question. So Carol can correct me if I'm wrong, but from, from my understanding, the neighborhood has been doing a lot of weeding, a lot of, Carol mainly, but they've been going over there and weeding a number of times. And going forward, they were wondering if there could be two weedings a year. And, well, Carol, what is it, what is it that the neighborhood wanted? Was it in July and November or something?
Yes. Maggie Oldfield at Thayer Nursery suggested this because the problem is what, they planted eighty shrubs and seventeen trees. And the people who bought the adjacent house where this is, these watering systems attached has been paying to water it, but it's not their land. They don't want to take care of it. And we have it in a natural state, but when we, a bunch of volunteers cut down the weeds last year, we needed a pickup truck. We needed somewhere to dispose of them. And so my second request is to ask if there's a DPW crew who could cut and remove weeds from the site each August and November as needed because they would have a truck.
And it's town land, right?
And it's town land. So this is volunteers maintaining town land. And what we hope is that the town will maintain, will help with this maintenance. The volunteers are still willing to monitor it, to remove invasive species. We just can't deal, it's a large piece of land and we can't deal with hauling away the biomass of cutting down this area once or twice a year. So we'd like to, we'd like a liaison at the DPW and some help from the DPW in maintaining this large tract of town land, which is not the responsibility of the people who bought the house that was on Mr. Caneely's land.
So what I would propose is that Tim speak with the DPW and see if they're amenable to doing something like that.
And how, how many, how long do you think it will take before, before you won't need to do that any, before that won't be needed in order to get the trees up on their own feet, you know, so to speak? And so that the, the, the trees, the invasives won't be as big a deal, the weeds won't be as big a deal? How, what? How long do you think?
Yeah, I don't know about that. I mean, if we could get four inches of bark mulch after one of these cuttings and removals or weedings, then that would help to keep with the moisture, retain the moisture in the soil, build up the missing topsoil, which the developer had agreed to leave behind, but which was not left behind. And would help to camp down the, the verdure, the growing, the growing of the weeds. We're just trying to keep it attractive for the neighborhood and for the town. It's, it is a very scenic area that is used by people who are recreating in the Blue Hills.
Yeah. I think they're most concerned with the survival of the trees, though. If, if, if you can demonstrate that that would help the, the trees and the plants that have been planted survive, then that would, that would.
Mulching would help with that. You know, removing weeds and then following that up with mulch would help with that.
Okay. So I think we understand the request. I think there's some homework to be done on figuring out the mechanics. Tim, I mean, I think you're already knee-deep in this. If you could follow up with.
Yeah, can I, can I?
Please.
And, and Carol, I, I don't mean to, because I'm, I'm just sort of going back on, on, on this discussion. I don't want to make it seem that this was an egregious thing that happened. And I get fired up about, about, about the, the prospect of, I'm glad I wasn't around when it happened because I would say things that I would regret. But where, where I'm coming from is as, as sort of the person in the room that has to deal with this on a day-to-day administrative and bureaucratic basis, I, I've been dealt a not great hand in terms of, you know, how to, how to help you achieve the things that, that you want. So what, what I would ask, and, and again, I, I think the, the town owes you its thanks for your spearheading of, of the care of this parcel so far. What, what I would ask for is an estimation on your part of what are, between now and whenever we determine the end of the term of this sort of surety bond is a sort of a schedule of, of expenses that you anticipate as, as reasonable to sort of, as a kind of last measure to, to, to help this area out in terms of weeding, mulching, the things that you feel that you need to draw down from this bond. Because I, I think we can, you know, to the extent that we can put together a understanding of like, okay, here's, here's the, here's the agreement that we have. It takes the form of these discussions because we really don't have anything in writing. This is the best that we can do. It would be very helpful to know in what the sort of expenses are anticipated to be. I think beyond that, because we're talking about two different things here, we're talking about how to sort of unlock these funds that were earmarked for the purpose of, of maintenance and survival of this area. So I think that's what I'm, I'm talking about right now. The, the second part is, you know, to, to your point about the ongoing maintenance, which is, you know, something that the, the neighborhood has taken on its shoulders, but really is a town responsibility because it's town-owned land. And so that becomes a little tricky. I can't speak for DPW. So in that regard, what your expected kind of workload for that would be in terms of, I know we, we talked about, you know, either biannual or, or whatever weedings and, you know, how many trucks, you know, we would need to give them an understanding of, you know, what exactly would be expected of them. There is a lot of town-owned land that has a lot of weeds and shrubs and whatnot that needs to be cleared. And so I want to just make sure that that is something that they are capable of putting into their kind of workflow. So having as much specific information about that as we can, I think would be very helpful, you know, in, in those conversations. So it is a little bit of homework that I'm asking from, from your group, but it's really just all to sort of help us, you know, manage this from a town hall perspective.
Would, should we be dealing directly with the DPW?
Well, I think so because, I mean, it's, it's town land. I mean, we can't, you can't write checks to private individuals to do, you know, work on. They should be doing that. And, and then of course, the question is too, as Tim, Tim mentioned, that we've got, you know, three checks that have been sitting in a bank, in a, in a box for, you know, three years. If they're, they were never cashed, they weren't good after four months. If maybe they were certified, but I'd be surprised. So, you know, it's just, we don't have a bond to protect, we don't have anything to pay because I don't think those funds are any good.
Yeah. And, and, and to Kathleen's point, you know, the, the reason, the reason I'd like to see kind of a, an. I'd like to see kind of a, an anticipated kind of estimate of, of costs is, you know, it would help us judge as to whether or not it's worth it to go back to Mr. Caneely and try to, you know, twist his arm to, to put up, I mean, he, he's, he's effectively already has the twelve thousand dollars because we never cashed the checks and they're no good anyway. So it's, he, he, effectively the bond doesn't exist right now. So, you know, in principle, he owes us the money if we ask him for anything less than twelve thousand dollars to do this work. Um, that being said, the, um, the the effort, um, and, and the sort of uncertain outcome of that may just lead us to believe that, you know, maybe this is something the town should just, you know, get some mulch, get some guys out there and just do the work. Um, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not putting us on the hook for that, um, but that's information that we would need. Um, if it's a reasonable cost, it may be something where we determine, let's just go do it. Um, so that's kind of the first, uh, I think, step here.
But Tim, rather than send Carol to ha- restart a whole new conversation with the DPW, I think it would be really helpful if you could help facilitate that. Because you have the background, I mean, they're not going to know the history here. So I mean, to the extent that you're willing to help her, I, I would appreciate it, because I do think that you know, the way that this was handled is not the intent of the way the board expected it to be handled. And we did feel as though that there should be resources to remedy the situation. And I don't think that this request, um, you know, whether it's April or November or July, but to extend to a reasonable period to make sure the trees that we were hoping would be alive are actually alive. I don't think that's, um, you know, uh, an impossible request. I don't know how we get there. But I think at a minimum, what we can do is try to help the neighborhood get to some answers and encourage the DPW to the extent that we can to be helpful partners in this if they're willing. So I would think it would be great if you could help, help them facilitate that conversation.
Happy to do it.
Okay. That would be really terrific. I also want to say that, um, I think as a, um, in an effort to restore the natural setting, it has not been unsuccessful. I saw monarch butterflies there only a couple of weeks ago and, um, wild birds, and, um, it is a, a piece of nature. And that's what we're trying to keep it. It's all the planting is native trees and shrubs. Um, so, um, I think that, um, I think it has not been unsuccessful. Oh, there's the pictures of it. So this is the piece of land we're talking about. Can you see it? And as you see, it's right, you know, right along the road and it's, um, uh, and these are the little trees that have been planted there. And then, as you see, there's a lot of shrubs too, which makes it a little bit of a challenge to how to deal with, uh, with the weeds, because you don't want to, um, cut down the landscaping shrubs with a hog, a brush hog or something. Um, I think it will sort itself out in time. Um, the main problem is if we're trying to keep it somewhat neat, where to have someone help to cart away all that, you know, all that greenery. Um, so I don't, I think it's been pretty successful, actually. Because, um, there are, there are several trees that look bad after this long drought that we've had this summer and the tremendous heat. And this is going to be a problem with trees going forward, you know, when you talk about replacing trees. Um, they're not going to be that easy to replace, because the growing situation and the heat and the drought and the weather that's coming after us is going to be worse and worse. So when you cut down a tree, you can't necessarily assume that, oh, you're going to replace it. Sorry. Um, so, um, um, okay, so, uh, so where is that? That is a good answer. And Tim, I don't want to add to your workload being, you know, I, I, I really do not. So we'd be happy to just take some direction from you. And not make you go through old, old papers.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, I, I think it's important to, you know, in, in the absence of a written agreement, I think it is important to assemble as much kind of, you know, just factual basis in like, you know, here's where the understanding of where this began was, and we can sort of map out, you know, the future from there. Um, and, and then, and then again, it would be helpful again for me, you know, to have. I think you got cut off there.
Are, are you talking now?
Okay, um, but yeah, it just, it's sort of, uh, I, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you if you were just talking. I'm sorry.
Okay, I gotta say one thing, which is it may not be as complicated as it sounds, because if all the trees survive, the developer's off the hook anyway. And, um, if the, if the town can give us some mulch, then, then we can take care of that ourselves. So.
Yeah, I, 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 I think just understanding how much either in cost or volume or whatever, what your needs are. And then, like I said, we, I can have that conversation with, with the DPW guys. And it's like, yeah, no big deal, then great, we'll do it. Or we'll figure out if we need to go, you know, get that cash somewhere. I think, you know, understanding a little bit of the history here, you know, it may be more trouble than it's worth to try to extract anything else out of this guy. Maybe we wash our hands of him, but, um, but also he owes us.
Do that. I think we could probably do that. And just move forward with the volunteers in the DPW. But Jason is a president of the Hillside Neighborhood Association, and he's also a lawyer, and I, and I want to know if he has something to add to this.
I unfortunately do not.
I, I think we have a plan to move it forward. So Tim and Carol will be in touch and we'll explore options with the DPW. And if that turns out to be a dead end, we'll explore options to track down Mr. Caneely and see what we can, we can do from there. But I think you're right, Carol. I think it's probably not as complicated as it may sound, and there's probably several ways to, to tackle this. So thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. I think.
It has a long tortured history, but it doesn't necessarily have to have a tortured future. It can be very simple and very close to fruition.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, and thanks for your continued attention and care of the issue and so many others, and we appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, thank you, Carol.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'll get in touch with you at some future date, or you'll get in touch with me? Yeah. Okay, bye.
Okay, so we have, we are officially going to move our 2021 zoning articles in the housing production plan discussion to October eighth. Um, but I do want to just touch on the one item that's still left under old business, which is East Milton status report. We've been asking for a, a little while for an update, and Judy Barrett is, um, going to come to one of our meetings in October, whether it be the eighth or the twenty-ninth, I'm not sure, but Tim will set that up. In the interim, Tim has circulated her scope of work to all the board members, so we could refresh our memory on what the outcomes are expected to be. Um, this contract expires at the end of the year. It's my understanding that Judy has been working with the um, working group and has three more meetings of that group and feels as though she is relatively on schedule um, to hit her target, and she can give us more detail when she comes before us in October. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Tim?
Um, it's, it's a good group. Um, they, they really, I think they get it. Um, and, and they're, they're providing some, some really good input, um, that, that I think Judy would be able to make, uh, make some good work with. Um, I, I think there's a real desire to, um, you know, and, and Rich is, is on that working group, so he can also speak to this. Um, uh, but I, 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 I think it's, it's, um, it's not, it's not the usual frequent flyers. Um, I, I love the frequent flyers. I think, um, they're great. But it's also good to hear some new voices, um, you know, uh, you know, chiming in on, on, on the neighborhood. And I, I, I think what Judy is doing is um, is, is, is kind of a good way of really starting to build up some institutional knowledge of, of just planning. Um, whi- which I think will enrich our conversations out in the, out in the neighborhood, um, going forward. So, um, you know, I, I, I think it, it's been trying, it's been tough trying to schedule, uh, an update, just because, you know, these public hearings have gone on a little bit longer than I think everyone anticipated. Um, so it's, uh, it's not on Judy, it's, it's on kind of our kind of schedule. Um, we want to make sure that she's got time to, to give us a full report and we'll also sort of give time to uh, the other things that are on our agenda. So we'll, we'll get her in here, um, at some point, but I think it's going well so far.
Rich, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, 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 I, yeah, that was a good, uh, that was good, Tim. No, I, I, I agree with everything Tim just said. It's, it's been good.
Good. Okay. And if that's everything, then we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Second.
Okay, um, let's do a roll call. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Penny Swenson?
Yes.
Carol Tagayas?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Thank you, everybody. See you October.
Okay, bye now. Bye.